And then a couple of people have one hour time limits and I think we can get it into one hour. But to focus on, well, the general discussion first on priorities, which we recently status in the August eighteenth. Audrey did in August eighteen last select board meeting and there are five of them listed here and I'm not sure enough suggesting this is complete. But that would be the priorities list and we could so be discussing some of the goals and objectives that are attended. To those priorities, add to subtract and that's the decision of the select board. We can have some general discussion on those and hopefully summarize what we think we've concluded that are the capsule of the select board priorities, goals and objectives. If that sounds reasonable with you all, I'm happy to amend anything here, but I just wanted to pop that up because I thought the the last Tuesday's select board meeting went a long way to help us to keep status and we will hopefully do that going forward if we agree, of course. But there were, at that point, there were, let's start off with these five priorities. These are the five that were discussed at Tuesday's, last Tuesday's select board meeting. Again, I'd like to start the conversation with priorities lists. What are we missing? What do we want to delete or add? And I look to you, my fellow select board members, to make comments on that if if you could.
So I can, I can.
Go ahead, Mark. Go ahead, Mark.
I made my own list and this covers in in no particular order. Broadband was on it. That was the first thing I put down. I had harbor sea level rise, you know, and that's sort of climate change redundancy. I had the energy, which I I subtopics of solar efficiency Camden and and I can't read my notes. What's the third one? Oh, car chargers, which is something we talked about. I had EMS on it. I had a small priority. Parks and rec dealing with tennis court, baseball field and skateboard. That's a small thing, but the thing, the most important thing, I think, that is not on here for me anyway, is dealing with short term rentals and affordable, long term housing.
Okay.
Great point.
Good point, Mark. Okay, other comments from Taylor, Jenna, Allison?
My list is almost identical to Mark's. I did have the tannery on my list.
All right, let me put that down. I'm taking notes here. And I'm a little slow.
But I did not have housing on my list and I think that's a fantastic point. I know there are also a lot of people moving into the area, which is a good thing, but housing inventory is shifting. STRs are becoming really prevalent and I do think that's something that absolutely deserves attention and I thank Mark for bringing it up.
Me too, Jenna. I totally agree. Taylor, Allison?
Yeah, I, this list is very familiar in that it's pretty much been consistent with what we've talked about the last two years, which I think is important. I don't have anything very different from what we've from what Mark and Jenna have talked about and what we talked about the last select board meeting. The one thing that I've been thinking about that, you know, I don't know that this is necessarily a priority project, I'm using air quotes, outside of what is the normal day to day town business. But I'd kind of like to at least talk about sort of what the short term and long term plan is for road and sidewalk infrastructure. I know that, you know, that there is a plan and a and a timeline for stuff, but I'd kind of just like to take a look at that so we know sort of what next year looks like and and the next two or three years. I think we did a great job hitting some of the worst roadways this year that really needed some help. But I, that's just something I'd like to be a little more in tune with.
Okay, great, Taylor. Actually, I'll get to Allison in a second, but when I get to my list, I I think one of the the sixth bullet or so should be a general discussion about infrastructure.
Infrastructure, yeah.
Infrastructure improvements, maintenance, and that should cover my mind sidewalks, streets, drainage, parks and parks that we don't haven't maintained, that considered infrastructure, that could
Yeah.
That could cover everything from, you know, just repairing Shritail Point to skate park, whatever it might be. But I think that's, it's because, but we never listed in the past, it really is ongoing and and I know Public Works has a huge agenda there, but I'll come back to that in a second. How about you, Allison?
Um, yeah, a lot of that list or all of it, that's already written is pretty right on. I worry a little bit about the short term rental conversation. I, I do think we I do think there's an issue and I, and of increasing the availability of housing is is definitely a priority of mine. I'm hesitant to tie it too closely to the short term rental discussion, just because I've seen, you know, the path that that's taken us in before and when there's not a great, you know, solution that we can all kind of agree on to promote it to just I would just be wary of of sort of estimating the amount of time that that would, like different approaches to to that issue would take. But the only, I guess there are two other things, definitely the the roads and sidewalks and pedestrian stuff, I think is a lot of what Taylor said, but then also just, I think we're very much on this path, but trying to make, you know, every time we do something, trying to improve safety for pedestrians and cyclists and scooters and skateboards and whoever else is using the road. So I agree with that, but then the only other thing, and I know we can't solve everything at once, but communication from the town, I think is something that we need to just continuously strive to improve. And that we, you know, we may be maxed out in terms of what current staff can do, but just, you know, everything from, we've talked, and we've talked about this in previous years, like, you know, improving the the website and we're making some progress there, but newsletters, you know, having a printed newsletter that that goes out every so often. So, yeah, everything that everybody else has already said, but trying for the communication stuff when we can.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a great one, Allison. I have so many conversations recently about trying to, you know, people trying to figure out comments about how we communicate with the public and we keep talking about it, but I agree, we got to try to find some better way, ways to get the word out there. It's been very frustrating to me too. I think it's an excellent one. I think what Audrey has put on here is is excellent. I think the housing affordability thing is is it's twofold and I I do agree STR, short term rental is not a short term thing. It's going to take a long time to to bring that together, at least if we follow the history of any of the surrounding towns. But I think that, I think affordability slash availa- availability is availability could develop into a discussion on STR, but I I think that's, that's I'm amazed at how the inventory has been literally sucked up during this time of the pandemic. It's, it's, it's just, it's been outstanding in a sense for, especially for the realtors, but we don't have much inventory of rentals, I'm talking about full time rentals or 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 housing for purchase, et cetera. I think it's, and by the way, that also cascades into, to me as potential sub, we don't have to put it on here, but we've talked about maybe the tannery or maybe Sagamore Farm that there may be some things that may come over the transom in the next months regarding housing and affordable housing. So that fits into that category. The biggest add to me, I already mentioned, was the the infrastructure thing. I think we've, we're doing so much there and it's really exciting. But the complete streets, the drainage, but I, I might include the parks because in my opinion, our parks are are need need maintenance. They need work. There's, I think almost every one of them, I can point to something that needs something and I, and brings me back to what some of you and I've always said, let's fix what we have before we get too excited about adding ten miles of something or other or another two or three parks. But I, I, I'd love this list a lot here. I mean, if we start discussing, you know, the goals and objectives of each of these, my God, we could spend weeks. But I, I think this is a really substantive list and and inroads have been made in every one of them, which is, as Audrey discussed last Tuesday. We need to keep statusing it. We need to, one of the things we need to do as we go forward with these is lay out some objectives and goals for each one of these. So for example, renewable, renewable energy, I know one of the goals we will discuss is getting our, you know, performance contracting in place this year and and getting to decide which elements we want to attack on the Schmorges word matrix that Siemens will be providing us in a couple of weeks, but we could discuss that in every one of these is a whole long list there, but I, I think this is, unless anybody has any objectives, or are we missing anything?
I, I do have a bit of objection. I would like to see short term rentals on, listed on the list because I think that, yes, it's a difficult subject, but if we don't talk about it, then we we bury it and I don't think that's, that's appropriate. I think it needs to be discussed. I don't know what the answers are. I have some ideas, but I think I I want to be able to discuss it as part of this.
Well, maybe we should change that bullet to just housing and list STR regulation, affordability and availability as three bullets.
I would support that as well.
All right, so Audrey, if you could, just make the topic housing and then below housing, we would have housing availability and housing affordability. As two other bullets, rather than trying to put it all in one sentence. Yeah. You're good at this. Perfect. Any, any other comments?
Um, yeah, I pulled on as my, um, I'm trying to log in from my computer now too. Can you guys hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear.
Um, well, I guess I would see, like, I kind of like the housing affordability and availability as the broad category. And then, I mean, STR regulation is one possible strategy to achieving that, but I don't if if you get into like the grammar of it and the bullet points being consistent with what I don't know if housing, STR regulation would be a possible way to try and achieve housing affordability. It isn't just one. I don't know. I don't see those.
Yeah, yeah, I kind of agree with Alison. I'm, I think that, as I've, my original thought was housing affordability and availability. They, well, especially the availability part is, it, oh, it's an umbrella that encompasses STR regulation.
I mean, I'm fine with putting it, I'm, I'm not, I'm not arguing against Mark. I want to do, I, I would like I, I guess I just don't want to change, I don't want the whole entire goal of increasing housing affordability and availability to be centered around STR, so I would just see that broadening and then underneath.
It's not, as long as this, as long as it's on there, I get, I get a lot of people that talk to me about it and say, we need to discuss. I just want people to see it on, on the priorities so that they know it's something we will discuss. How you want to put it on there, as long as it's listed is fine. I just.
Why don't we, why don't we, even if we make the second vote, availability of housing stock slash STR consideration?
I just think housing affordability and and availability as the, as the top thing and then underneath it. At, you know, I would see possible, you know, possible STR regulation, possible, you know, there are other things that we can do too, like the select board can, we can write things that encourage people to rent rooms out in their houses. I have, I have people, there there are lots of different strategies
Yes.
to achieve those things.
Mike, can I jump in?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I, I, I don't really have a strong opinion either way about how we listed on the bullet point. I, I agree that STR should definitely be on there and I do think that STR policy would be a tool for us to encourage or discourage people from short term rentals, but encourage people to make their rentals, year round rentals for people that live and work in the community. To me, that's the big, to me, the big issue is families that live and work in the community are having a hard time finding viable places to live, particularly in Camden. And just an anecdote that I experienced in the last week that really made me think about this. I worked on a chimney a couple of weeks ago for someone that had bought a house right in town in April, beautiful house. And after I finished the job, I asked them what their plan was for it and they had bought it with the intent of renting it and I fully expected them to tell me that they were going to rent it seasonally. Because as we all know, that's where, you know, prime dollars are. But they actually said to me their intent was to rent it year round, hoping to find a family so they could help the community. I was blown away by that response.
That's great.
And I think unfortunately, they're probably, you know, in the minority of people, because most look at the business and the, you know, the bottom line, but what can we do to encourage more people to look at renting like that? That's the, that's the holistic sense for me.
Good point, Taylor. If you, are there any more? Are there any comments to what Audrey's written on this housing one, wording changes or qualifications on the two major bullets and three sub bullets?
Um, my only, like, this is a semantics thing, but we struck a lot of the river restoration stuff really does go along with our climate change resiliency.
It does.
Work and so I, just from a messaging standpoint, I know that a lot of us know, you know, know that, but I think a lot of other people don't and I, you know, I think sometimes it deserves its own category when, when, when Audrey's going down her list of updates at a select board meeting, but that really should be viewed within that larger.
Okay.
Right.
Audrey's made a change here to subset it under climate change resiliency, but I'm not sure it's necessary, but if that makes everybody feel better, it's fine with me. I don't care how. As long as we have a list.
I think Alison, I think Alison made a good point because some people think it's something off by itself and it's not. It's a part of the whole picture, which is really important. So I think that people understanding that it's part of the bigger picture is an important thing.
All right.
I can't see all the way down there. Did communication go on there anywhere?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
You see, what's, do we have, what's seven bullets now or whatever you have? I think we have seven bullets. A bit major items and then a bunch of subsets. No, I, I agree. That's fine. It's quite a, quite a list, actually. Look forward to putting dense in all these for the, any, any other comments?
Can I, can I, just a kind of clarification? So for the housing housing stuff, um, I guess of the you know, things like STR regulation, incentivizing year round rentals and other things we've talked about in the past, I, I put small lot development because we did talk about it in the past. You might want to knock it off the list, but anyway. Of those things, you know, realistically, we can only work on a few at a time and I think a lot of everybody's hesitance, hesitancy to tackle STR regulation is the fact that it is it becomes the most important and only thing that we will do for probably about eighteen months, just to be very clear about that. And I think you all know that because we've all talked about that. And so knowing that that is going to be something that becomes an overwhelming priority, that's sort of I think everybody's hesitancy to tackle that issue. So I guess if, you know, I just ask some guidance, because if you want us to go down this road, of course we can, but I think it's just, we have to
Audrey, you're breaking up.
Some of the other things and
Audrey, you're frozen.
You want us.
You're broken up, Audrey. You're, you're, you're.
You're not Wi Fi maybe.
I think she's getting Wi Fi shock or I think she's plugged in, but.
Am I bad?
If she's plugged in, then we have a serious problem with our fiber.
Yeah, your, your, your screen is frozen, Audrey. Now you're bad.
I think she knows. She looks like she's.
Yes.
Make a good case for the broadband discussion.
Sorry, that was my fault.
We, this is the thing, we have fiber at the town office. We have the gold standard, so any of these problems are not attributable to lack of fiber.
So, Audrey, what were you trying to say?
What was the last thing that I cut off on?
We heard about the STR long term, eighteen months and that I kind of got broken up after that.
Okay, so I guess I'm, you know, I'm just looking for some clarification because if that's a priority, that's, you know, that's great. We'll start working on it, but I, you know, I think that we all need to go into it with our eyes open, that it takes a lot of time. It's pretty much going to take the majority of your time up as a board because there is so much interest and, you know, public input around all of this. So I think that, you know, you just need to decide out of these sort of you know, different initiatives to achieve the certain, to move forward these priorities. There, there are certain things that you're going to have to pick. We can't do everything all at once and, you know.
I know some outside groups had been trade organizations, so everyone to look at had been working on STR regulation that they were going to bring to the town or potentially even make it a citizens initiative. I wonder if we expect to see that sometime soon. I guess I'm looking at it like, are we going to have to deal with it sooner rather than later, whether we initiated or not?
I guess I don't know the answer to that question, but I think to Audrey's point, we could qualify STR regulations not necessarily be an affirmative decision to absolutely apply it, but to analyze whether we should be focusing on it or not.
Right.
That's, I don't, I'm, I'm not, in my mind, I'm not thinking this STR regulation says we're absolutely doing it, Audrey, at least that's my thinking. That we're going to look at it and see if it is an option we need to pursue against or with and parallel with the others. I, I agree with you since this whole all these seven items ever added up is is a lot, a lot of work, but we've been tackling them piece by piece, but maybe qualify the STR regulation to say consideration, perhaps rather than, you know, a definitive decision at this point in time. Does that make sense?
I guess, but what do you, what do you need from us to figure out whether or not you're going to make that a priority or not now?
Well, I guess, to me, it would be discussion of whether or not that's going to improve substantially the other two items. You know, in other words, year round rentals and small, whatever, the items, I thought we had another one on here. But if that's going to be substantially improved, a discussion on whether that STR regulation is going to solve the problems, because I, I don't feel clear on it myself and I certainly don't feel confident to make, absolutely have to have an STR, STR regulation process in place. I think there are some regulate, consideration, discussion that has to happen and and a lot of things we need to to learn about the housing market from, from staff.
Allison, have her hand up. I'll have her question when she's done.
Yeah, I don't know if you can see hands, but.
Allison, go ahead. I can.
Uh, yeah, so I guess I, I don't feel that as a board, we really had much in terms of a robust discussion about strategies for attacking this issue. We've certainly talked about STRs and I, I do see that as an, as an issue. There are also, you know, different things that we can do to regulate those that would take more or less time or be more or less controversial, but then I really agree with what, with what Bob is saying in terms of you know, it would be, it would be nice, even after looking at that Build Main conference, for example, there are lots of different strategies for, you know, improving availability of various things in towns and sometimes our conversation is guided by what comes to us from trade organizations might be a good way of putting it or, or, you know, smaller groups, but to kind of, I really like to feel confident that we've taken it like a science based approach a little bit and had maybe somebody that Audra would suggest either, you know, come and speak to us about different things that have worked or not worked in different communities, or we could be all assigned to you know, watch something, some kind of presentation that's available elsewhere or I mean, I know you're really knowledgeable about this, Audra, and I guess would want you to sort of guide the the discussion on, okay, well, this is, you know, this is what I think it's important for you to understand. This is what is sort of known and not known in the world of municipal development strategies or whatever.
Yeah, no, I, I hear, I think I, I understand what you're all saying now so that in order to sort, to tackle this priority, you want to make sure that we're kind of looking at what the actual issues are that are making housing stock. What, what's causing sort of the pressure on housing stock or housing affordability in Camden? So that we're not sinking a lot of time into something like regulating STRs when maybe that isn't the major problem. Maybe it's a small contributing factor as opposed to, you know, you're just, yeah, you're just saying you want to you want more data backing up that it's something that typically be tackled.
Yeah.
And also, like the issue of the, of big, and lots of people in Camden live in these massive houses. Yeah, maybe they're there all year round, but is there anything that, that speaks to the, to the climate and energy stuff as well? It was, what, what strategies are there to try to fit more people into houses, encourage people to you know, turn their house into a multi unit dwelling and, you know, maybe there's a, maybe there's state laws that we need to be trying to change so that we can offer incentive based programs as well.
I definitely like this way forward. Gathering more information and data about what, you know, that can help sort of lead us forward. Specifically, I think what would be helpful for me is, I think at this point, STR isn't necessarily a novel thing. So I'd love to know, know more about what other places in the state and either outside the state, maybe that might be comparable to us have tried and either it feels like they have worked or not worked, just to give us a sense of, you know, what type of regulation would we be talking about if we feel like it's something we do indeed want to make a priority?
Here's, here's my thought. The thing that I would like to see is, I would like to see if any other places have come up with solutions to encourage people to change from short term rentals to long term rentals, to open up thing and are there tax incentives? Are there whatever, you know, governments have done to sort of encourage people to do that. I have a friend that had a, has a house, a second house that was doing short term rental and he was sort of complaining about it one day because, well, we got to go and clean up and do this. And I saw him again, he said, and they switched to long term and it made it so much easier, so much simpler.
Let's, let's, let's try, let's try and stay on the, on the discussion on the priorities and I, I think what I'm hearing and we agreeing that, and I hope Audrey's clear that this is going to be a subject of discussion on future agendas with the select board on a Tuesday regulars to, to fill in the blanks, because I think that's what we need. And, but in, in one of the blanks is certainly the amount of work we take if we ever go to the affirmative on the regulation is not small. Any other comments on this list of goodies that we have here? I guess we could eliminate that last bullet on five. And I know Audrey put on infrastructure parking. Does anybody have any comments about that one?
Oh, hold on. Parking.
It's under item six.
Hmm, what do you?
Audrey added that.
Stand on your thoughts there.
Okay, so this is all, this is all like just before the pandemic, so.
Oh, right, that thing we were talking about.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would still advocate for moving forward with that.
Yes.
And I did, I did have the, the same consultant that worked with Bar Harbor. He was very interested in working with Camden. I'm sure he would be. Again, he was very, very understanding of the fact that we, we all our bandwidth was all sucked up by the pandemic. So anyway, I just wanted to remind everyone that we talked about that and it's all, I think it's all part of the infrastructure conversation.
Yeah, I definitely, I loved that conversation that we had and definitely strongly support finding more about it because it could be great. It could be a great solution for us, but I'd like to know more.
Yep, I agree. So I guess we can take the question mark off there, Audrey.
Great.
Any other comments?
Speaking of parking, maybe we should, now that we, well, this is probably considered a minor issue that's not. Speaking of parking, maybe we should, now that we, well, this is probably considered a minor issue. That's not a but make, well, like the town employees parking lots.
Yeah, let's let's um, let's not get into the issues. I think it's just too much. I I understand that'll be part of discussions for sure. Uh, but any other priority or subset of priority that we want to, that we want to add to this list? I think it's a pre substantive list from my perspective, but if anybody else wants to add or subtract something, please let's note it now before we you know, summarize it as being um outlined for our published priorities for the remaining ten months of this fiscal year. But, oh, great job, gang. I'm impressed.
Right, I think it's a really, I think it's a really good list.
I think it's, thanks for all your input. It's great, Audrey. We can, um, I think we should uh get it all in black and uh and uh publish it for record and uh maybe even put on the um whatever way we want to publicize it uh for uh for for the future.
Communicate it somehow.
I agree.
Some strategy that we choose.
I agree. I agree. Maybe we'll publish it somewhere, but we can figure that out. But that said, um, I think we can adjourn if you're if you're if you agree.
Would you mind if I ask one question? It's sort of off off the priorities list, but it's more of a a governance.
Okay.
Um, implementation thing. So committees, boards and committees and meeting, you know, meeting and everything around that. So kind of everything that I was most concerned about has sort of happened with everybody piling on Janice and Janice um, being too nice to say no and um getting stuck hosting a lot of Zoom meetings. Um, that arguably, uh, there's no action items that really need to, you know, to come out of them. So I just, I think that, you know, we've got to have some sort of rigor or um standard around that.
I was planning to put that on the agenda for September eighth.
I mean, I'd love to do, just because this is, I don't think it's very sustainable for Janice, even.
I agree. I we we should put a hold, in my opinion, to a select board, we should put a hold on committee meetings until we make a final decision on September eighth about how committees should meet. Whether they can, whether we give the opportunity to meet, um, you know, this, the biggest committee, I think it's seven or nine, is if it's really meet in person if they they feel safe and want to do that, um, um, or get a quorum to do that, because I agree, I've seen what it's done to Janice and it it just doesn't work. It's too complicated.
I mean, here's me next Tuesday, right, Bob, the first?
No, the eighth. I believe it's the eighth.
Our first meeting of September is the first.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay. Oh, that's better. That's even better. Alison, go ahead.
I feel really uncomfortable doing that. Um, putting a hold on committee meetings doesn't feel certainly not something we can just throw in on the side in a workshop. Uh, I also think that um, that in general, like things that are based around technology are a bit of a challenge for the town. Um because mostly it's people that already have other jobs, demanding jobs that are kind of sucking up, you know, different, different pieces of it and that um, it's makes lots of sense to me that Jan, it's not at all surprising that Janice um would be completely oversaturated by the additional things we've saddled on her. Um, and I can see that that's not sustainable also, but um, I think in in general, the town's needs for technology and expertise in that area in turn, whether it just be hosting hybrid Zoom meetings or making the committee meetings work or or, you know, constantly updating the website or this or that. Um, I would prefer, I think, to see more resources allocated toward us being able to do that and being able to have people involved and participating rather than to say it's too much, you know, we have a long history of committees.
Yep.
And and I agree that there are a lot of problems um with it, but I'd rather devote more resources to making it work better than shut it down. We actually need help with that ourselves too with just.
Yeah, just to be.
Virtual meetings are going to be an ongoing need.
All we're trying to do is a clarification, what I was trying to suggest is we just don't, we don't have any schedule for this week anyway. Next uh a week from
Today.
Today is our next select board meeting. I was wanting to be agenda item, not a workshop item, to be able to discuss the the committee process going forward.
The 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 one thing, the one thing that I would suggest is we have always hired people. We had Bruce to run the the AV during the during the um uh select board meetings, uh, there should be somebody we can hire to coordinate the meetings to take it off of Janice. Instead of stopping the meetings, let's just hire somebody to to.
I'm sorry, I, we just don't have budget for something like that.
All right, look at what this is. Guys, we're getting off on a on a select board item. We're going to discuss next Tuesday. Let's stay, let's stay on the workshop uh agenda. I agree with that. Totally agree with the issue. Uh, maybe we can do some homework between uh now and next Tuesday to put some ideas on the table to Alison's point or to Audrey's point, because at some point we have to open up the uh, open up the uh the valves somehow uh for continuation of of our of our committees and boards and 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 etc, which are also been rather stymied by this, but we'll we'll get it on the agenda. Anything else? All right, with that, we'll adjourn. Thank you so much for this very, very efficient meeting of only forty minutes. I'm impressed by you all.
Should should we take, should we take another twenty minutes uh talking about adjournment or do you want to just uh?
Ratner, I won't get mad, but I won't even.
How about some team building, guys?
Well, that was great, because that's very.
Yes.
Well, catch up with you all later and thank you so much for your time this morning and don't work too hard, you all.
Bye, guys.
Bye bye.
Care. Bye bye.